We'll begin recording. And you're on, Jane.
Okay, thank you very much. Just a quick reminder for our friends that are in the Zoom audience. Please keep your camera and your microphone off unless you are meeting at some point. Thank you. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Yes.
Your audio is starting to sound like Diver Dan.
Okay, in that case, I will turn my video off and you already know it's me, so we're good. I think Chromebook has been doing something a little strange here. Okay, is that better?
Uh, yes.
Okay, thank you. Please let me know anytime. Um, I need to start with a rural call of school committee members as I call the meeting to order. Bill?
Yes.
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
And me. Yes, thank you. Good evening. Per former Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access this school committee meeting, but members of the public can access via Montague Community Television Broadcast. The extension of the emergency open meeting law provisions were signed into law as Chapter 20, Section 20 of the Acts of 2021. The school committee reserves the right to implement additional remote participation procedures and will notify the public of these procedures as it is practical to. The option for public bodies to hold meetings remotely until March 31st, 2025, has been signed into law by Governor Healy as Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023. Any members of the public who wish to join the meeting may do so by accessing the link on the Gil-Montague Regional School District website. It can be found under School Committee Notices and Agendas for upcoming meetings. It will be under tonight's school committee meeting. And just for information for the public, as I've just read, the legislature and governor have signed the law allowing the public bodies such as school committee to continue to meet remotely. We are also intending to meet in person whenever possible, as we have once previously. If it's not possible for all the necessary members that we need at the meeting, such as school committee staff, presenting reports, et cetera, to meet in person, then we will still have our meetings virtually as we need to, as this meeting is. Good evening, everyone. In addition to the other information I just read, we are live streaming as well as the broadcasting and a recording of the meeting will be available on MCTV and our district website following the meeting. This is the time we'd like to welcome our visitors. And we have public participation reinstated to hold it remotely. And I'd just like to make a quick reminder before we start that public participation. We welcome public comments during this portion. We ask that the time be limited to three minutes or less for each participant. Public comment is designed to allow the school committee to listen to ideas from the public. Therefore, the school committee does not engage in verbal exchanges during this time. And when you are speaking, could you please identify yourself by your name and any affiliation before you start to speak? And we'll recognize you one at a time this evening. I think first we have Joseph Katz.
Hi, Jane. Thank you. I'm outrunning Aaron, so is okay if I go just audio and not video too?
Okay, I think I recognize your voice. It sounds like you.
Okay, good. And I'm coming through clear?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, great. Great. So I'm Joseph Katz. I'm a Unit A union member in our district. I'm also a resident of Turner's Falls. So it is great to be speaking to you today. And while in many ways these remote meetings are convenient for me, I do miss our informal conversations during our in-person meeting. There are great opportunities to check in and express appreciation for all the honest hard work getting done in our district. I, for one, am happy to meet with members of the school committee for informal conversations. And please reach out to me or any member of the union board if you're interested in this. If we're able to speak informally and have a conversation, I would have more of an opportunity to thank each of you for the time and dedication you volunteer to our community. We do not get to see or hear about all the hard work you do, but please know it is appreciated. As a Unit A union member, I'm hopeful that our Unit C employees will have, will soon have a new contract too. It's shocking that Massachusetts state law allows for our Unit C employees to be paid below minimum wage. I guess Jim McGovern, if you're listening today, let's, let's try and fix that. But I'm so thankful that our district does not pay Unit C's, our Unit C employees below minimum wage. Thank you. I believe the wage scale our Unit C employees are paid under should reflect the district's practice and remove any steps with a listed wage under $15 an hour. I believe removing these steps will create more steps of wage growth for Unit C employees. This will not only incentivize keeping more of our skilled colleagues within our district, but I believe continue to value their work. We all know why we value our Unit C employees across the district. Still, I want to take the time today to express some of what I value about our Unit C employees. I think of our educational supports professionals or instructional assistants and how they support some of our most vulnerable students. They provide essential services and complex educational plans with fidelity. In substantially separate and mainstream classrooms across our district, they are supporting students on and off their caseload to create more inclusive schools. I think of our administrative assistants in the main and guidance offices, coordinating across departments and knowing every student, family and employee that walks through their doors. I think of our tech department, how they support every staff and student with their personal devices provided by the district. I think of the specialists providing speech and language services, occupational physical therapy and individual nursing care for our most vulnerable students. I think of our librarians creating a space where students, educators and families can find resources and come together. Our Unit C employees are the backbone of so many key operations within our district. They are essential, and without them, our schools cannot function. More than all of this, though, I value how students across our district find security in the care Unit C employees provide day after day. Thank you.
Thank you, Joseph. I believe our next speaker is Jane Finn.
Hi, sorry, I just couldn't figure out where the unmute button was. You'd think I know that after all these years of Zoom meetings. Good evening. I wanted to come on this evening. I am a former employee of the Gil-Montague Regional School District. I was there for 12 years. I still have a vested interest in the fact that my child, who spoke at the live meeting, will be sending their child to the Gil-Montague Regional School District, that they'll probably start in Gil. One of the things that I've been looking at is the job boards in the area in, in all the school districts in the area. And it disturbs me to find out that Gil-Montague has 15 positions on the board that directly affect kiddos who are on IEPs. I will let you know quickly that Mohawk has 10, Greenfield has seven, Pioneer has two, Franklin Tech has zero, and I know they do have people on IEPs, and I even looked at Frontier and they have three. Why do I worry about this? My job is as an educational liaison and advocate. I'm, I don't work in this particular area, though I've been called by parents, but I work out of Amherst. So the reason that this makes me a little bit nervous is that if a lot of these jobs have been on the board since the beginning of the school year, and when you look at the jobs like the speech and language therapist, the P, the physical therapist, and that there are multiple one-to-one positions, including three that are in just one school, those kiddos are not getting their IEP services met. As an example, if you look at a speech and language therapist who may work with a kiddo one times 30 per week in the time from, let's say, the beginning of the school year till now, that's about 270 minutes that kiddo has not gotten their speech and language services met. And even if you give them extended school year opportunities, that would still only add up to, if you stayed at the one times 30 per week, that would only be about 150 minutes in compensatory services. So that makes me a little bit concerned for these kiddos and, and especially if there are parents on here too, please understand that I, I'm concerned for your kiddos as well. So we have to look at where does this come from? Like what, what's going on? And I'm not saying blame, I'm just saying where is this coming from? First thing I want to put out there is that after working there for 12 years and also knowing people there, I know the paras, the teachers, the specialized teachers, and the adjustment counselors and the guidance counselors are absolutely trying to support these kiddos on IEPs and work very hard for them. So I'm not gonna, you know, point, I'm not gonna say that they're not doing their job, they're bending over backwards. I'm also gonna venture to say that the pupil services director, who I have worked with in the past, is probably wringing their hands about this because I know that they really care about the kiddos. And that, you know, after working with them, you know, previous to even Gil-Montague, how intensified they were about the kiddos getting their services. I can't look at the school committee because I have to say to you guys, you guys are volunteers for this and kudos to you for doing that because at least in the past, some of you guys were verbally abused by people coming on. So I, I appreciate the fact that you volunteers are there. So I guess you have to look at the people, you know, holding the purse strings and why wouldn't somebody maybe come to work at Gil-Montague as opposed to one of these other places that have less openings? It is widely known that the Unit A took months, 18 months, I believe, of their contract, and it's thankfully ratified, apparently. Unit C is still in that area of negotiating, trying to get fair compensation. I get the feeling that they may have to compromise or settle for a compensation. I am a bit disturbed that I know people who have worked there for 10, 15 and 20 years and may have two jobs and still have to take advantage of SNAP or food, food stamps benefits, fuel assistance, housing assistance. That means they're having that much trouble living every single day. So I-
Jane, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but we have said about three minutes and so if you could be finishing soon, that'd be great because we're a bit over. Go ahead and finish. Thank you.
Surely. I just wanted to encourage parents, not only of kiddos on IEPs, but parents who are friends of or have, know people who with kiddos on IEPs. Send emails. Send voicemails. Talk to the school committee. Talk to the people who hold the purse strings for sure. Let them know you're watching. Let them know this is important and these kiddos need their services. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe Heidi Schmidt is next.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes. Hi, Heidi.
Hi, I'm Heidi Schmidt. I've been the art teacher at the high school since 2007. And I'm currently the president of the GMEA, the Gil-Montague Educational Association. Um, so we know that we're building the 2025 budget, which is coming up already. And so I, I haven't read the agenda. I don't know if that's on the agenda yet. I know it's been on the agenda for a while. But already I've heard from the building people that the question has come up of, of what can we cut again? Like what can you do without? What can you cut? And it seems like this has been coming up pretty much every year that I, that I've been working here. And it's always been kind of like, we can't really do without any less, like, you know, the art budget, I haven't even asked for, I haven't seriously asked for an increase to the art budget since 2011. It hasn't increased since then. And actually, art supplies have like gone up even more than double in a lot of cases. Um, but part of the reason I didn't ask is I'm like, oh no, they have no money again. But that leads me to essentially, it, I think that it would be nice if instead of what can we do without, the question was, what do we need? What do our schools need? What do our students need? What do our staff need? This leads me to a recent decision to have, you know, teachers moved from Microsoft devices and Chrome, to Chromebooks, which has been really problematic for especially a lot of people. And, you know, one of the reasons that was, that was stated was that the change in technology was necessary both from a student's security perspective and from a technology support perspective. And so what that makes me think is that it's not actually an education perspective. It's not actually about what teachers need or what would be best for students or the school, but it's that we don't actually like have enough people to support different platforms. So I'm really hoping that as we build a new budget, that we prioritize the, the students and the teachers and the people who do the work and that need certain things to do the work. And that we also prioritize increasing our technology staff. We used to have more people working in the technology department and now every student has a device. It's gotten even more complicated. So increasing positions probably in technology would be important. Increasing the amount of classrooms, if we have, say, a large cohort in elementary, I know we have a large second grade right now. Returning the math position back to kind of normal levels. I know we can't get one yet. And then, of course, commit to funding Unit C employees. And with the increase in funding, I know we're not getting the SIR funds anymore, but they have made changes so that we are going to be getting more funding from the state in terms of regional transportation, transportation for out-of-district placements and something else that I can't find on my page right here. But I, I'm hoping that the more money will also mean that we can make sure to have funding for the things that we need to do and that we can ask for the money that we need. All right, that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Heidi.
How do I turn this thing off?
Okay, I believe the next person is Tabitha Martinelli.
Hello. Um.
Hi, Tabitha.
Hi, I'm working with my phone at the moment, so I'm not visible, but I am here. I am the librarian at, well, I am the para-librarian at Turner's Falls High School. I have worked in the district since 2003 in a variety of roles. But I am a paraprofessional. I am a Unit C employee. I also was recently elected treasurer of the Gil-Montague Education Association. I wanted to talk a little bit about what it's like to be a paraprofessional in this district. My monthly net income from Gil-Montague is approximately 12, 2,000, 2,000, $1,234. That can vary if I substitute, which since we have a sub shortage, I have been doing off and on. But after expenses, and I do not live a lavish lifestyle. I drive a 2009 car, which I hope will get me through a little longer. I have the basics. I have the internet so that I can be here tonight. But my rent is close to $800. And once I've paid for those basics, I have roughly 150, 190 bucks to spend on food, gas and oil to heat my home. I'd like to save more money, but I am living paycheck to paycheck. I can't do that. So I currently have three jobs, three paying jobs, and I still qualify for SNAP. Um, I've got an application in for fuel assistance. It takes a while, but I was approved last year, so that shouldn't be a problem. For Gil-Montague, that is a problem, though. I am relying on taxpayer-funded charities, basically, to supplement my income at Gil-Montague. And I believe that I shouldn't have to do that. Especially considering that I work three jobs. I get some assistance from the state, from the food bank, but I do things now like schedule my medical appointments for times when they bump up against the food bank hours so that I can go and pick up some food. I gave up having bifocals. I should have bifocals, but they were $200 more at BJ's, mind you. And I just, I shouldn't have to live a substandard wage. I really shouldn't. I have been dedicated to this, to this district. I love our kids. And, you know, I'm luckier than a lot of the paras. Because I've been here for 18, for 20 years, I make 1846 an hour. I know that most of the paras make less than that. I don't know how they do it. I don't. And I, if you ask me how I do it, those are just a few of the ways that I do it. I thank you for your time. I hope that you will continue to consider that Unit C needs a living wage. And I hope that negotiations end soon because quite honestly, 18 months is a little too long. Thank you.
Thank you, Tabitha. I believe the next speaker we have is Ramona Electronica.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. Hi, my name is Ramona Electronica and I am the elementary librarian at Gil, Hillcrest and Sheffield, and I am a Unit A employee. I'm here tonight to share my thoughts on how integral Unit C is for the success of our students and our schools, just like so many others shared tonight. This is now my third year in the district and my seventh or eighth year teaching. And while being in the district, I've held multiple roles, including a per diem sub, a long-term sub for the library and a long-term sub for the kindergarten teacher before fulfilling this full-time role as the current librarian. When I came into the district, some of the first people I gravitated towards were our Unit C members. Our paraprofessionals, our front office admin staff know the school and the students better than anyone else. Last year, when I took over the kindergarten position mid-year, I was really unsure about how it would go, but I had the best support imaginable with a paraprofessional in that classroom. That Unit C member knew the kids better than anyone else, and we as a class were beyond lucky to have them. That Unit C member was a constant in those students' lives when they had so much transition that year. And they were the glue that held our class together. This is just one example of the immense importance Unit C holds in our schools. I bring this up to showcase another way that Unit C works day in and day out to educate and support our students and staff. However, just like mentioned earlier today, many Unit C members have to leave their jobs at school to work two or three other jobs, nights and weekends, to supplement their income. Many Unit C members make so little on top of those multiple jobs that, again, they qualify for government assistance. To me, it seems unacceptable that our employees give so much to our schools and so much to our students and still do not make a living wage. Based on the current district website, as Jane mentioned earlier, there are at least six open Unit C positions just in our elementary schools alone. Without them, the backbone of our schools are weakening. I urge you as the school committee to support Unit C in what they deserve and what our school and students deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ramona. Okay, thank you, everyone, for participating. We will go on to events, upcoming and and important events that are happening in the district. Brian?
So later this week, beginning Thursday, Friday and Saturday night, November 16th, 17th and 18th, each at 7:00 PM, the middle school will hold its production of Annie, also known as Annie Junior. And then Sunday, there's a performance at 2:00 PM. We hope people will come out and, and see the middle school group as this is the first year that Kimberly Rose, the director, has had enough students to be able to participate in multiple productions again during the, the school year. Also, on Friday from 4:00 to 7:00 PM at Turner's Falls High School, there'll be a COVID flu, COVID and flu vaccine clinic. On Monday, November 20th, the Student Council is hosting a student-like football game under the lights from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, followed by a bonfire beginning at 7:00 PM. The Second Annual Hillcrest Sheffield Turkey Trot will take place on the fields between Hillcrest and Sheffield on Wednesday, November 22nd at 9:15 AM. And also on the 22nd, that day will be an early release for Thanksgiving and of course, Thanksgiving on Thursday and Friday, November 23rd and 24th. And then we're very excited again to host the Elementary Schools Family Literacy Night on Thursday, November 30th from 6:00 to 7:30 PM. Last year it was held at Sheffield Elementary School and this year it will be hosted at Hillcrest Elementary School. And again, that night is for all three, families of all three elementary school students. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any other events that they found out about that we didn't get on here in time? Okay, in that case, thank you. We will go on to the student representative report. I believe we have her arriving now. Hi, Sina.
Hi, everybody. All right. So I don't have a ton of stuff to talk about today, which I, I'm honestly kind of grateful for because October was pretty crazy with student council stuff. We had like a ton of things, one after the other. So this month is a little, a little bit more calm, which is nice. So, um, on Monday, I believe, we're hosting our first flag football game and bonfire in a while. We, we used to do like our traditional like Turkey Day, Greenfield versus Turner's Falls football game with a bonfire, but we don't have a football team anymore, so that kind of stopped a few years ago. And I don't know any high schoolers who've like really experienced that. And so we're trying to bring it back in our own style. And so we're doing a flag football game where anyone can join, like regardless of like gender or anything like that. So it's like just a mixed thing, which is really fun. People don't have to be like an athlete or anything like that to join. We're also gonna have some people cheerleading, guys and girls. I think it's pretty cool, you know, like a nice little mixed event, which is gonna be really fun. We, we're planning on having like 200 people show up, I think, like we're expecting a big crowd. We're gonna have hot chocolate and everything. And then, of course, the bonfire. We've scheduled, um, I believe it's like a firefighter, EMT guy and a fire truck is gonna be there. So that's all set with like the policy side of things. Make sure everyone's safe. And let's see, other than that, I guess we were kind of talking like pretty far in the future for like December, we're thinking of doing like candy grams for student council where we can like have people buy little notes and candies to deliver to classrooms, which are really fun. Um, that's all we have for like things we're planning, but something that happened recently. So today we had the annual fall conference for WMESC, which was really, really fun. I went to that. We had a pretty good number of students from our student council go. It was hosted at Long Meadow High School and it was really, really awesome. We had some great speakers and we had what we, one of our own student council members is one of the WMESC reps, so he was like running, helped run it, Own the Valley. With different workshops, we had fun games, things like that. I got to meet like a ton of new people. They're, everyone there is on their own student councils. I got to meet some other school committee representatives too. It was just a really great experience where everyone there is super committed to their community and their school. And they're really like outgoing and just show great leadership. And it's really, really fun to be around other people who like share a similar mindset. So it was really great. But yeah, that's all I got.
Thank you, Sina. We appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, superintendent's report, please, Brian.
I want to say congratulations and best of luck to the Turner's Falls High School volleyball team. The volleyball team a little, little more than a week ago, won the Division V Western Mass Championship. The team has also moved their way through victories in the first three rounds of the state Division V tournament, and tonight they are currently competing in the state semifinals as one of the final four teams left in Division V. They're competing against Bourne High School at Worcester North. And we wanted to obviously congratulate the team on their great success this year and wish them luck tonight. We also wanted to congratulate senior Joey Mosca. The Turner's Falls High School senior finished fifth out of 87 competitors in the state Division III golf tournament, combined with his second place finish in the Western Mass Tournament. And the golf team winning a league title, Joey has capped off a great golf career at Turner's Falls High School. The district wellness committee met remotely on Wednesday evening of November 1st. Pretty soon I'll be sending out a brief survey as we invite members of the committee to participate in one or both of two subcommittees. One of the subcommittees will focus on a review of the new health and physical education frameworks and make recommendations for curriculum updates. And the other subcommittee will provide feedback and recommendations for updates to the district's bullying prevention and intervention plan. Each of these suggestions and recommendations- Each of these suggestions and recommendations will be brought back to the administrative team. Um, school committee meeting with students is taking place tomorrow at nine ten. Um, is there, while we're here, is there anybody who is planning to participate? Tina had sent out a, um, a link and the meeting will be remote from nine ten uh, to nine thirty-eight.
Yes.
And so that
Exactly. Yeah. Three. That sounds good. If anyone else would like to join, please do.
Then okay, um. I wanted to give an update on, on the pool repairs at Turner's Falls High School. In mid-July, we learned from the new Montague Board of Health Inspector that the pool had to be shut down on August third and could not reopen until we had certified drains that were compliant with the Virginia Graham Baker Act. We began the process of determining solutions and finding vendors that could do the work immediately upon receiving the notification. After seeking advice from three different vendors, it was clear that only one vendor, Connecticut Custom Aquatics, was able to do the work with us in determining what was required to ensure we were in compliance. The vendor came out and did an initial evaluation in mid-July to retrofit the existing drains. After some investigation, it was determined that the existing drains could not be made compliant without a fabrication, fabricated modification to the pool's structure, which required a custom fabricated retrofitted stainless steel VGB wedge drain cover that covered the width of the pool in the deep end. The estimates for engineering and installation costs of approximately fifty thousand dollars were established in mid-August. A PO was processed in mid-August and submitted to the vendor who began working with engineers to create the fabrication. The company did not come out to dive the pool and get final measurements until October twenty-fourth. The, the design for modification was received in early November and forwarded to the Building Department and Board of Health for review. And the unit went into fabrication with an anticipated installation the first week of December. The vendor had initially given us a January completion date, but we, we obviously pleaded with them, expressing that this would be an extreme hardship. Um, and they were able to manipulate their schedule and move up the install. This date will be confirmed at a progress meeting on eleven twenty. When the vendor is ready for the install, the pool will be drained. The, the drain cover will be installed and then electricians will have to come in and ground the unit, at which time it will be inspected by both the electrical and building inspectors. While we realize this closure is interfering with both park and rec swimming, as well as our own swim team, we've done everything in our power to move this along as quickly as possible and are at the mercy of the manufacturer and engineers. This will technically change the configuration of the pool. We're in touch with the vendor regularly and hope to have the work completed on schedule. And we want to thank everybody in the community in advance for their patience. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions or comments for Brian from the committee? Okay, thank you. Business and Operations Report. I don't think we have a separate one this evening. I think we have a capital improvement uh, request to be coming out later during this. Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, Jane, we're losing your, your audio is scratchy again. It, it was, it was, uh, we could make you out for a little while, but it, it's becoming one of those things that you might have to have your camera off for this meeting.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll try to just turn it on when I'm not talking, but I'll forget and I'm sure. So I'll do my best. Thank you. Um, I was just saying, we don't have an extra Business and Operations Report, but there's another item during regular business about capital. And so we'll be working with that when we get there. Um, the next item then is School Committee Reports. The first one is Warrant Subcommittee Approval. We'll need a vote. If it's acceptable, there are three warrants and I'll entertain a motion when I'm done reading them. We can approve them all in one vote if that's acceptable. The first is a Fiscal Year Warrant Number Three Four Two Six, dated eleven fifteen twenty twenty-three in the amount of three hundred eighty-three thousand, six hundred eighty-six dollars, twenty-three cents. That's an accounts payable to pay our bills. The next one is as well. It's for Fiscal Year Twenty Four. The warrant number is thirty-four twenty-seven and the date is also eleven fifteen twenty twenty-three. This one is in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, eighty-nine dollars, thirty-six cents. The third warrant is a Fiscal Year Twenty Four High School Student Activity Warrant. The number is three four two eight, dated also eleven fifteen twenty twenty-three in the amount of ten thousand, five hundred twenty-one dollars and twenty cents. And all of that information, complete with each of the details and every line item is in our packet for anyone to read if they would like to. I'll entertain a motion to approve those three. Heather, thank you.
I'll second.
Second. Thank you, John. Um, any discussion before we vote? Okay, in that case, we'll take a roll call to approve the three warrants. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
Clifford?
Yes.
And me. Yes, thank you. The next item under School Committee Reports is our Policy Subcommittee Report. Um, we've included the entire packet, so you can see what we've been working on and what we will continue to work on. But this is the second reading. Yes, Heather?
Oh, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I was, it does link to the entire packet, but I've bookmarked them and those links go directly to those specific rewordings for us this time, just so you know.
Good, good. Thank you. Cause those two are B E D H and B D A. This is the second reading for those two and by our next, by our next meeting, we will be, it's a third reading. We'll have a discussion and then we will vote on it. But if anyone has any questions or discussions at this point, we'll also entertain it. Okay, thank you. We'll do that next time then. Um, moving on to the Business Section, I believe, Brian, you needed to change the first item.
Yeah, so, um, obviously with the, um, there was a Student Council field trip today, which would not have interfered tonight, but um, with the volleyball game, the volleyball team winning very recently and then having their game scheduled for tonight. There was a fan bus assembled and the overwhelming majority of students who qualified for the Adams Scholarship, um, who would have been recognized this evening were either playing in the volleyball game or traveling to support the team. And so rather than do this on two separate occasions, Tara and I contacted all the families and the students to let them know that we would reschedule for November twenty-eighth.
Thank you. And we are glad that they're going to see the, the volleyball tournament or participating. That's wonderful. And we will just put that on the agenda for our next meeting, if that's acceptable. In fact, I will entertain a motion in a second and we'll vote to remove it and to put it on next time.
Same old.
Okay, Heather moved.
I'll second.
And John seconded. And that is again, to take this item off this agenda, put it on the next agenda. Any discussion? All right, we'll take a roll call vote. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
And me. Yes, thank you. Um, next item we have is a summary from the MASC, MASSS Conference Attendees. MASC, just as a reminder to everyone, stands for Mass Association of School Committees and MASSS is Mass Association of School Superintendents. And the three attendees were Brian, Heather and myself. And we spent three fascinating days with workshops from shortly after sunrise to well after sunset. Just kept learning. Um, and so we'd like to just kind of give you a snapshot, a bit of a synopsis of some of the different conference, the, um, panels that we went to and some of the information that was covered. Brian, do you want to start?
Sure.
Okay.
Um, so when I arrived, the first session that I went to was a session called The Unique Challenges of Regional Schools. Obviously, regional schools are all over the state. And it was more of an, of an overview. Um, and in the course of that overview, um, they talked about some of the considerations for funding, uh, chapter seventy, chapter seventy-one, uh, in that discussion. The next session that I went to was really interesting. Um, it, it was about crises and, and superintendents managing crises and, and the, um, you know, basically understanding the message during crises and the importance of the crises. And so to give you one example from this, uh, each of the, I think there were four superintendents and a school committee member and it was like a panel. And each of them had uh, shared stories that went from, you know, something like getting a threat, a swatting threat against the school, all the way through uh, the potential perception of a crisis because there's a gap in communication and information isn't out there. And there was a lot of discussion around social media and, uh, really being uh, really well-aligned with law enforcement when messages are going out, you know? So for example, one school gave a bit of information about a, um, they had an active situation in a school and somehow, um, the, the incident command folks working with them had incorrectly put out information to the public that there were casualties when there were in fact, none. So that's sort of where they started. So you can imagine, while being very informative, this was one of those, uh, one of those conference choices that resulted in some PTSD and I immediately had to call my wife and tell her I loved her. The next session that I went to, uh, was related to the new IEP forms that are slated to, uh, begin to roll out in the spring. My biggest concern in coming out of this is, is both training for our, our special education staff, our related service providers, as well as, um, making sure that our system frontline, which is, uh, that the state has consulted with them and, and that the technical, technical support is going to be there to ensure that they have the new forms, um, updated in the system and ready to use for the upcoming school year. The next session I went to was Partnering for Equity in Early Literacy. Um, one of the things that I found to be interesting about this particular conference in general was that it was really validating of the work that's been done by Jean Powers, the elementary principals, as well as the, um, the remarkable elementary teachers and the implementation of Witten Wisdom and the others, uh, other support measures such as LLI, uh, and their, their use of data and, uh, universal screeners in K through three to monitor student growth over time. Um, but what I found to be most interesting was there was an enormous amount of emphasis on the research that indicated that um, more children are able to read than traditional, um, approaches to early literacy, uh, lead us to believe. And so, um, I found that to be very interesting and also pretty validating for the work that's done here in our district by our teachers. Uh, the next session that I attended was the, the panel presentation, um, which was Planning for Succession in Equity Work. Uh, I really don't want to give too much of a summary of this one. It, it was, um, the speaker was outstanding. The primary speaker was outstanding, inspiring and gave an enormously, um, worthwhile context for the reasons why we, we do equity work, not as a one-shot deal, but, and not just all the time, but also that we need to plan for the future. And that was one of those things that I, I found to be inspiring. Um, the following day, the day began with a presentation on artificial intelligence. Um, I did not write down the name of the, the gentleman. I know Heather was late in getting up to the table because she was trying to get a book and I didn't even make a, make a run for one, but they were passing out some free books.
It was Justin Reich.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, and I, I bought a book for us.
Oh, okay, okay. Um, I was, I felt better not knowing a great deal about AI coming out of that conversation uh, and presentation. Um, I certainly feel as an educator, a, a lot less threatened and a lot of this is similar to things that we've dealt with in the past in, in, in terms of advancements, uh, technological advancements and, and how we account for, um, it taking, potentially taking the place of learning. And then the final session that I attended was from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. I was pleased to find out that the funding limit oh, for the overall projects for the upcoming year, um, has been increased by thirty-four percent. Uh, that things like, uh, that the accelerated repair program is going to be reinstated the following year. So we will once again be submitting a statement of interest to try to get the roof at Gil Elementary School replaced. I think this will probably be the sixth submission. And there was a lot of information that we found out, uh, related to uh, comments made by particular schools who attended, who are in various stages of the school building process. And so, um, one of the other things that I did want to add, and, and I'm not sure if this will be part of our process when we get to it, but if for some reason, there are outside funding sources, they have also changed their rules that previously outside funding sources were counted toward, were not counted toward the local contribution. And therefore, uh, were removed from, uh, reimbursable expenses. Um, those will now not be included in the local contribution and can be additional funding sources on top of it. And so the, the MSBA has recognized that school districts need more support. Um, they've managed to find some revenue in their work with the legislature, but they've also changed their rules to be a bit more flexible with local school districts. And so I wanted to say thank you to everybody for, uh, the opportunity to attend. I think the conference is great. Um, not just the, the offerings, but also the opportunity to catch up with, uh, several colleagues uh, and fellow superintendents from around the Commonwealth.
Thank you, Brian. Um, and I should have stressed the fact that except for the general sessions, which were held for everybody at the same time, Brian and Heather and I, um, checked in with each other. So we were able to attend three different sessions at each of the other times. So we were able to get a lot of information, um, from all the different presenters. Um, Heather, would you like to go next?
Sure. Um, so, uh, Wednesday, so the, I believe that the whole conference kind of had a theme of equity. I mean, so I kind of tried to focus on those a lot. So I did, um, Leading for Equity, Cultivating Culturally Responsive Leaders in Schools. Um, I have nine pages of notes and I'm really glad I took them because the MASC sends out, um, resources, but they're very limited. They just went out today. Um, and so I have really great stuff. I'm not going to go terribly into them, except for ones where I, they're I'm, we'll just leave it at that. Um, but I can share it with, um, school committee and anyone else who's interested. Um, I thought I could share my screen and I had a little link, um, that you can scan if you wanted to see it. But it's so much stuff that you probably wouldn't get enough out of it. Um.
Heather, I also, Heather, if you wouldn't mind speaking to, I did miss, uh, one offering that I attended, which was the Blackstone, Blackstone Valley Excellence in Course Enhanced Learning, because you also attended that one?
Yeah, well, actually, we can, that was the last one we went to. And I have to say, and I'm sure it would have been great. It was about, um, preparing students for, um, working ultimately. Um, and the Blackstone was offering, um, some kind of tech programs. However, towards the end, we found out that it was only doable if you weren't getting chapter seventy-four A, so, which we were. Um, but we do, you know, it, it still highlights the work that, I mean, it reminded me of the work that we're doing with the innovative pathways and, and the things we can do, um, with getting that funding. So that one was great because the students, uh, there were some parents and students there and it's always just so great to hear from the students. And they were exceptional. They were not only involved in the, um, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Um, just not, not, not just the work aspect, but really getting out there in the community for their school. It was really amazing. They were, they were super kids. Um, let's see. And then my second session on Wednesday was Let's Get Real: A Comprehensive Approach to Race Equity Access and Leadership. That was through Needham Pub, or that was That was through Needham Pub or that was um, there was a panel from Needham Public Schools and the Real Coalition is really interesting. So if you just search Real Coalition in Needham, you'll come up with their site, which is very thorough, has a ton of tools and resources. Um, they had this great little handout that I think could be great for something that we could do for our district. It was just a short piece of paper, but with some QR codes and kind of the basics. Um, I've got that and I put it in there. Um, even just, they had essential questions that I really liked. Um, let's see if I can get to it. I didn't put them there. I have a link to it. I don't think I can get to it too quickly, and there are so many things that I went to, so I'm not going to bog you down. Um, I missed the third um session on Wednesday because I was a dev- delegate. Um, and I went to the, I went to the delegate assembly, which didn't go great. So it it they voted one through automatically. You get to go through the beginning. They're like, if you want to hold, we can, but we'll go through them all and only one. Um, um, number two, the opportunity um was passed quickly. We got through one and three fairly quickly. We got to item four, which had four amendments. Um. Amendments in that environment are just really tricky. And so we got really bogged down. One amendment took an hour. We ended up tabling after all of the work on it. And then the next item five of eight came up with five amendments and everyone lost their minds because that so with that started at three and that was at six fifteen. Um, and we had already missed the networking stuff that we were supposed to be doing with with our colleagues. Um, and dinner was about to get started. So, um, in all transparency, I left at that point. I guess they did quickly get through some of the others. I don't know how. Um, they got through the last four. But apparently they did in about fifteen minutes. So I didn't miss a lot. I have a feeling they just decided not to do any um discussion. So I didn't get to another session that day. Um, the I did get to go to the reception for just a little bit. And I spoke with um Dr. Tracy Benson of the Anti-Racism Leadership Institute. Um, and I grabbed his book, um, which is Unconscious Bias in Schools. So I'm really looking forward to reading that. He was so amazing even to just to chat with and talk about just some things briefly just about our school and and a way we could sort of start to tackle those issues. Um, the keynote dinner was interesting. Um, it was a little about AI, um, but um the commissioner didn't get too too far into it, to be honest. Um, Thursday, I went to first Building Leadership Capacity and Equity in the School Committee and Superintendent Relationship. Oh, my gosh, Anthony Bent is a former superintendent and a current school committee member, and he is just such an amazing speaker. Uh, so that was just such a great presentation and it was just so focused on relationships, which is really what that's my, that's my passion, um, even teaching kids, dealing with others. I mean, it really comes down to relationships first and and safety and and just everything. So that that was really great. Um, that was nice because there were three uh case studies that so this was there, they were mostly from Framingham. And they went through three very specific case studies of how they used their um framework um to get through things like just building mutual trust, expanding recess um and um, something about Title IX Athletics, which I can't recall right this second because I had like fifteen more sessions after that. I'll review my notes and and see if we can get it in there. Um, the next session was a System Approach to Supporting Equity in the Chelsea Public Schools. That was also, that whole panel was exceptional. Um, there were some students there um as well. They were mostly from, oh, yeah, obviously Chelsea. Um. Let's see, I think they had a, so theirs was neat because they went through the steps of starting with the district-wide equity audit um and finding the plans, creating their five-year strategic plan. And they shared all of their tools, which was just so great. So I have all those in case we start working on that. They did make it just realistic on how this is an overnight change um and that it was, it's it's a long-term plan. Uh, let's see, I'll skip down. Panel six was Hiring Staff in a Competitive Environment. Now, that was really interesting, obviously. Um, I, you know what? It comes down to every school has that problem. I was talking to one um school committee member from the eastern part of the state, but another small town. Um, and they had lost four teachers that week and and that was just so harsh. Um, they have only seven fifty kids. We have eight fifty. So four is just, you know how that is. That's that's really tough. So, but it was a neat perspective on it as well. Um, I particularly thought it was interesting. They had a, it was all just science-backed and a lot of articles, which I made, I I have all the links to. Um, you know, the pool is almost is especially in education is shrinking because a lot of the baby boomers are retiring and that was such a huge um generation. And then Gen X comes next and they're the smallest, they're tiny, and even the millennials isn't, they aren't really that big. So the pool in itself is actually shrinking. Um, so that was interesting. And there, like I said, they had a bunch of articles kind of going through that. But then they also started talking about how you could improve the school culture because that's kind of, we did a lot of interactive talking with people around in that session. Um, and it does seem to be that like flexibility and culture are just really huge and what that could mean in a public school. Because I mean, obviously, there's only so much flexibility you can give to a teacher. But there are things that that you can do flexibly in the sense of a schedule. Um, and so that was really, that was really interesting. Um, we had a networking lunch. Jane and I met up at um that day. We met up with uh a couple Greenfield School Committee members and had such a great collaborative discussion. They were super. So that was really, that was very exciting. It'll be fun to kind of connect with them on occasion. Oh, let's see, I'm not even a Friday yet. Um, I think, um, did you talk about the general session that night? No, Brian, I don't think you went to that one. So that was very cool. Uh, it was Transformative Relationships: Best Practices in Long-Term Planning for Equity and Strategic Communications. And that was by Darnisa Amante Jackson. And you should just go watch some of her stuff. She was such a super speaker. She was so great, super powerful, really interesting. Um, and quite truthfully, with all this diversity and equity stuff, she was also um, I mean, she's a black CEO and she's really involved in in schools and education. But she was the only person I heard mention anything about disability being one of the equity things too. So that was really refreshing. Um, but she was, oh, man, she was just so great. That was such a great thing. And she had so many different tools that those are my longest notes and I have, I have a lot. I have a lot there. There was a follow-up session to that too, that I stuck around for from with a panel that was also really interesting. Um, sorry. The awards dinner was really amazing. I have to be honest, I I shouldn't say this here, but I was a little bummed that by Thursday night, um, maybe only half the people showed up to dinner and then maybe only half of them stayed for the awards, which was really a shame because Danielle Sharbada was the math, I mean, the Massachusetts Teacher of the Year. She's over on Martha's Vineyard. She graduated Harvard, but she's an English teacher. So obviously she speaks really well and, oh, man, she was just, uh, so that was really cool. She has this project, she works in a public school, but she has this special project called Project Vine. Um, and it's for art. And I love that the kind of um motto of their thing is their curriculum is each other. Um, and any art that she has them create, which is oftentimes poetry, she makes sure that it's not just for her class and she tries to get it out in the public, which I think is really quite exceptional. Um, Friday, we did, Brian did talk about um Justin Reich from MIT talking about artificial intelligence. What's its role in teaching and learning? And that was really cool. I really liked that he just described what is AI? What can it do and what can't it? Because I think that did dispel a lot of the fears for a lot of people that have it. Because really, what it comes down to, it's fancy predictive text, which is just like when you're texting and the next word pops up. So that's, that's what it is nuts and bolts. It has a lot more parameters so that it's a little more interesting, of course. But he was just a great speaker too. So I have, I have his slides, I have all of the books, all of the articles um that he recommended, um, which is pretty cool. Um, and one thing I did really like about that is, so instead of being afraid of it, you know what? Ask the kids to get involved. Like, what do you want, what do we want to learn about AI? How can it be useful? And we just really just get them in on that process. Um, which is similar to metacognition, which is another one of my favorite things. So, um, let's see. Panel seven was Career Ready. Oh, that's the Blackstone one, which I already said. So that was a bummer. It was really great. The kids were great. It sounds like they have something great going. Um, it's just not something we can do with the with the funding that we get currently. But, um, yeah, so these days, literally, I can't even tell you how packed they are. And yet they're just, I come back so pumped because it's just so great to network, to hear different um perspectives and to just keep learning all of this stuff. So truly, 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 if you can get out there, go for it. I got to the beach, woke up at six. I went to the beach for fifteen minutes before breakfast. But um, uh, we don't get a lot of, everyone's like, oh, I hope you had fun at the Cape. Well, I mean, you know, it was, it could have been anywhere. But um, oh, super, thank you, everyone, yeah, for for letting us go because it was super. So sorry that took so long, but as you can see, I was pretty excited. It, there was a lot of good stuff and I'm really glad I took such full notes. So hit me up if you want to see them.
Thanks, Heather. I'll reiterate that it is, it's a fascinating several days. It's it's a lot of work, but it's so helpful in what we do. Um, as Heather said, we were able to meet people from the Greenfield School Committee, Pioneer School Committee, uh Mohawk School Committee. It was great. It it was great. Um, I'll try to do a short version of the workshops that I went to. Um, I do a couple, um, I did a couple on bargaining. Um, I don't think there was anything new invented in bargaining, but it was interesting just to hear perspectives um about current bargaining issues. Um, the um next one that I went to was Supporting the Whole Child, Putting Wellness Policies Into Practice. And that was really interesting because we have a wellness policy, which we're updating and will update again. We also have a wellness committee, which a lot of uh school committees didn't realize they needed to have an active wellness committee. But we do have one currently working, as Brian had mentioned earlier. So that was really helpful. Um, the next one was, I went to one on virtual reality. Is it right for our district? Which was pretty interesting. Um, it isn't something that appeals to me personally, but I think they presented again the when and why that might be useful, um, what the challenges were in terms of hardware, software, privacy, um equity inclusion. Um, and the basic idea, if people wanted to start using it to make sh- make it optional, maybe have a little pilot program to begin with and see how effective it was and how useful, for instance, things like taking students on a field trip somewhere that they would never be able to go. AI would make that possible with the right software. That was interesting. As Heather and Brian both mentioned, a lot of uh the focus was on equity. The next one I went to was Embedding Equity Work in Partnership with the District and Community. Um, that was really useful. Um, talking about, you know, how complicated equity work is, how long it takes. But it's a process and it's something that one has to realize you don't just do it and it's done. Um, you need to have leadership work and district work and taking advantage of um enough time that you need. Give people the tools, language, um, and actually, you know, learning from each other, learning from other committees. Um, I think that was really a a good intro to some of that extra information. Um, the next one is called Staying on the Message: Keeping Your Strategic Plan at the Forefront. And it again focused on what we do to have a mis- mission, vision and statement and core values that we refer to. It tells who your district is and um you should refer to your strategic plan um whenever possible, whether it's an agenda item or updates. Um, the part about that that wasn't as helpful was part of it was about um employing a business to make a fancy-looking version of your district strategic plan, which didn't seem to be as important as some of the other things we learned from that. Um, again, the general sessions, as uh people have said, Dr. Amanti Jackson was unbelievably good um about how long-term planning um in equity work is, it's really ongoing. People need to have empathy and understand that people can get fearful of change and that's something that we need to be very aware of. Um, and make sure that we are helping people feel the belonging part of it and not the threat to what what they currently know, I think is very helpful. They referenced uh multi-tiered support systems of education being important for equity and those we use here. Um, the follow-up panel again was really interesting, um, where we had a, some people from other different districts talk about um, again, the fact that it's not a destination, it's a journey that you go on. Um, the general session, Introduction to Generative Artificial Intelligence, was really fascinating. The positives, the negatives, um, as Heather's already referred to, was very helpful. The next one I saw was Preparing for Current Trends in Collective Bargaining. Again, there was some basic information, just some um reviewing things that we already know and use. The Leadership Lunch on that day was about Supreme Court rulings. Um, different Supreme Court rulings, particularly about diversity, social media, Americans with Disability Act, a lot of them are still not definitely decided or some of them are going to be challenged, the rulings. That was pretty interesting. Um, the next one that I went to, which I've never done, I've gone to this conference probably more than ten years. I think during COVID, there weren't a couple of years we could go. Um, this was called a Chair Chat. And it was for any chairs of school committees around the state. Uh, we had a moderator and people talked about what might be uh things that were most successful at this point, things that might be a challenge. And it's always helpful to hear other people and support each other in the work that we're all doing and recognize how complex it can become and how sometimes it can be a bit overwhelming at time, feeling like you are the school committee chair. Um, and the last one was Working Effectively With Different Personality Styles. It was about communication styles of uh people and how to help under, by helping understand the style that a person uses to communicate, we can really communicate better with each other. And I think it was um, all in all, I tried to make it a little shorter because I know everybody was just really pleased with how how much learning we do, how much networking we do. Um, and it is three really full days, but it's definitely worth the effort. Um, you can always rest afterwards when you get home. It's all fine. I didn't get to the beach till Saturday when it was all over, but I thought I'm just going to go to the beach before I drive home. So that was good too. Okay, and we will, again, we have all this information. Um, we will be talking about what what things we might want to incorporate in the future into the district and how well it might help us to learn. And also, if anybody is specifically interested in any of the workshops that we went to, we have all the information. If anyone on committee or even in the community would like to look at some of it, it's available. So, thank you. And the next item is
Can I say two things?
Absolutely, Bill. Yep.
I just want to comment on the uh school building assistance. Uh, a cautionary note there is that a good degree of the increase in the new funding is because of increases in construction cost. So it doesn't necessarily mean there's a better breakout there for it for more people, but there is money available for the programs that currently exist. And hopefully, uh, and I agree, it's a, it's a good bump and it should impact us next year. And then secondly, the equity issue is a really important one. And I want to uh second your thought, Jane, about it being a journey because equity can be misunderstood. As as I've read a, an editorial in the last month or so, um, trying to talk about equity being a dumbed-down thing. And it isn't that at all. It's an approach. And it's a way of dealing with individuals uh equally. But it is not necessarily expecting equal outcomes. So it it is a journey. It's it's a mindset. Um, and that's, that's my take on it uh as a beginning. So thank you all for your your reports and thanks for listening to my comment.
Thank you, Bill. We appreciate that. Anyone else? Okay, I think we have Jean Powers joining us for addressing pandemic learning loss.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Hi, Jean.
So I have a presentation today that is related to some of the work we've been doing recently within the district regarding um kind of assessment and looking at students and what students need uh related to their learning. So just an overview, we've been, we did our beginning of the year assessments across the district and during the week of October twenty-third through twenty-seventh, that's when we really dug into the data as teams and looked at providing supports and making adjustments to practice. So for the elementary level, we looked at literacy and math data. At the secondary level, we looked at um some writing prompts, um some responses to writing prompts and a little bit of the iReady reading data. And again, our goal is really to look at what students need individually, as well as in small groups, um and make plans for teacher practices. So our elementary literacy meetings, um this is a huge thank you to the principals and the staff and the, and each of the elementary buildings, um we did kind of two-hour retreat where we pulled the whole grade level. I know that was a strain on um staff. So I do appreciate everyone's time and letting us do this work. Um, we looked at all of our data, those reading specialists in each building, um kind of led the work and helped to pull out and identify specific needs that students were having and identify students that needed specific support. Uh, specifically in getting pull-out reading instruction, but as well as looking at what type of reading instruction support can happen within the classroom. So this year, based on uh work a team of us did last year through a DESI grant related to multi-tiered systems of support, we looked at literacy across the district, specifically at the elementary level. And one of our action plans was to create a uh intervention slash extension block um related to literacy for small group instruction within the schedule. And um we have had small group literacy instruction um in the classroom for many years, but by providing this kind of one-hour block where students receive two different half-an-hour sessions related to skills that they need support with, we're hoping to kind of target the skills um and build up student um literacy success both in the classroom. So classroom teachers are providing interventions and supports um to small groups, as well as students who need some additional support, either in special education or through our tier-two services of our reading specialist. Um, so so far, this has been going really well and teachers have really embraced this time. Um, and we look forward to seeing kind of where things end up um as we move forward with this structure. So one of the things that the state has tasked us with is to um use a universal screener to identify students who may be at risk for dyslexia. Um, so again, this is at risk, not that they have, that they are dyslexic, but that they could be at risk. There are certain assessments um that can kind of flag students based on where they fall. And so we shifted again based off of the year-long work we did as the Lead for Literacy Team last year, looking at different assessment tools that, one, give us the most specific data that supports the instruction we're providing, specifically K to three. And that is also um one hundred percent approved by the state as a dyslexia screener. And so we shifted to DIBELS, which um the district did have many years ago. Um, this is the newest addition and it's actually a digital assessment. And um part of the guidelines uh require us to do the assessment is students get flagged, to send letters to families, obviously provide student structured intervention, um and also connect with um families to talk about supports um both at home and at school. Um, so if anyone has, um, families would have already received this letter, K to three, um based on the screening that happened at the beginning of the year, but I did want to make the committee aware um of these new guidelines. And I did link the dyslexia plan that um Diane Ellis and I worked on that is based off of what the Massachusetts guidelines present. So we um are in compliance there. So I pulled some data, so Amplify uh DIBELS. So this is the literacy assessment for early elementary. So this is K to three across the district. Um, and you know, our, our goal is that we get more blue and green over time. Um, it's a new assessment. Often with new assessments, you do see a little bit more red. Um, but we uh, we really embrace it. Teachers embrace it. They've been using the data um with their students and with their work, and it seems to be a very positive tool that we've invested in. Um, it also comes along with a reading program that students, uh it's called Boost Reading and based on where they fall in their assessment, they have different challenges or um kind of levels that they will, they'll play um different literacy gains and activities that help build their, their instruction um over time. We also at grades four to six continue to use iReady for reading. Um, so you can see the, the numbers here. And then the BASS assessment, which we've been using for years, um uh for reading in four to six. So I pulled pie charts. Those are the ones at the bottom. So we've invested in a new tool. It's called Linkit. It's a data warehouse tool where some of our assessments, like iReady and DIBELS, we can download that information and upload it into Linkit. And then other assessments like the BASS, um some of our math assessments, teachers will enter data right into the, the data warehouse system, uh which is great because they're not entering into the worksheets or spreadsheets that uh someone can mess up and delete all the data. And it also lets you really look at a student by student and all their assessments across the board. So we're really excited about that. Addition to taking our, you know, our analysis of data and then using data, making it useful for teachers um to the next level.
Jean, could I just ask you before you go on, could you go back to the, the graphs? And could you just tell me about the color designation on this? Because it looks like it's not done quite the same as the last one.
Yeah, so the top one iReady is flipped. Um, so the green is, is the goods, you know, the, what we want to see. The green, so the iReady up top, the green with the lines is basically exceeding, the green with no lines um is meeting and then yellow is one grade level below. Red is, red with no lines is two grade yellow, two grade levels below and then red with the lines is three or more grade levels below.
Okay, and the best pie graphs?
And then the, yep, in the BASS pie graph, so blue is exceeding, so exceeding grade level expectations. Uh, green is meeting, yellow is below and red is like significantly below.
Thank you.
Yes. So our math data meetings were a little bit different. We held them in the afternoon of the Data Day on ten twenty-five, I believe it was. This was led by the math interventionist at each building and they looked at data determined kind of which students needed specific pull-out instruction, as well as what can teachers be doing in class to support students across the board mathematically. Um, and so we looked at specifically iReady. Um, you'll notice the K at the top um is fully yellow. We, and the number of students is one, so we actually don't do iReady uh that early. Once, one student took it. I don't know if a teacher had him take it or if it was um a mistake, but um so you can ignore K because we don't assess that till mid-year. And that's really because it's, it's an online assessment and we're doing a lot of other offline assessments with um, with our kindergartners. So again, the green with the lines is exceeding, green is meeting, yellow is like one grade level below and then it goes two and then three more. And so this is across the board and the sixth grade does include um the middle school, just because it's easier just to pull um the sixth grade as a whole instead of specifically the Gill sixth grade. Otherwise, it is across the district. We also have um a new screener based on the math recovery program that our interventionists have been working on. And so kindergarten to sixth grade. Um, you actually see a lot of red here, which is really interesting and something that our teachers have been talking about and looking at. Again, a brand-new assessment. Um, and what we did was, the math interventionist took this data and compared it to iReady to really kind of tweak and find out where the need was. And then this is just a screener and so they identified students who they felt needed a longer assessment and were able to really pinpoint whether or not it was just kind of a, a fluke or that they really need math support. And so having this initial screener and then having a further diagnostic assessment um has seemed to be really powerful for our math interventionists to really determine who needs what support um within the classroom. So um, you know, green is kind of the above, yellow is at and red is below. So at the secondary level, teachers reviewed writing samples. So this is the second year of this initiative where teachers in their departments have developed rubrics, either selected current rubrics that are out there or have developed rubrics to assess writing. And this is across the department. So you know, for math, the LA, related arts or languages, all the departments do these writing prompts and um so on the Data Day on ten twenty-five, this is the first time for them to look at the writing prompts, make adjustments to their own practice to support writing within their curriculum. And then they'll be assessed again mid-year and we're really looking at growth. So teachers are tracking, how are students growing in their ability to write? So if there was a prompt that was a narrative in English Language Arts class, they would do a similar narrative prompt mid-year. Um, so they wouldn't do narrative and then do an informational prompt, like they're really trying to compare specific writing. Um, so great conversations in each of the departments about the writing that they saw from their students. It's also a great way to look at student work and have teachers have conversations about instruction. Um, and so then I pulled our middle school iReady data as well and um this reading is at the top and math is at the bottom. Um, and so, you know, again, looking at this data by the classrooms, by the grade levels and talking about specific students as well as, you know, what are the supports? We do have a reading support course at the middle school level, as well as a math um support class. And so we have those additional supports at middle school. And so we've been doing a lot of conversation with specifically the reading team, um looking at vertical alignment. So vertical alignment from, you know, K all the way up to through middle school, through eighth grade, what are the interventions we're using? So we've had some really good conversations about that. Um, so I'm excited to see where things take us as we continue to build our interventions, provide our supports for students and um, you know, look at data over time, because that's, that's important, right? So we looked at one set of data now, now we're gonna look at data again and the goal is to look at growth. What students are making growth. And I think if we continue to see these incremental growth, you know, getting students closer or onto grade level, um we're gonna be in really good shape. And then we can really target the students who aren't making that specific growth. And that's where we can focus um our energies. And, you know, this definitely relates to pandemic learning loss, as we've talked about many times. Now, this is something we're gonna be seeing for years, but I think as we continue to support and build our interventions in reading and math, um continue to refine our other curricular components, science, social studies, we're gonna start seeing holistic growth from students. Um, and our students are doing really well right now. And so it's really great to see um our elementary curriculums, Witten Wisdom and Bridges, which are new over the past few years, have really allowed teachers and students to dig deeper into content and making connections across. So there's definitely some red, but I think we're gonna make some really good growth. I think some of the things we're doing to address the needs is gonna help us um in the long run. Any questions?
Thank you, Jean. I appreciate that. Anyone have any questions or comments for Jean? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda, we have the proposed fiscal year twenty-five capital requests. And I believe we have one or two people joining us for that. Hi, Joanne.
Hi. So I have the document and I can share it. I think.
Hold on, Joanne. Oops, sorry.
Yep, I think I have it here.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So a couple of the requests that we'd like to send to the towns. One of them would be a main office reconfiguration for Sheffield. So if you remember, what we're trying to do with each of the schools is have an entryway that people can come into with a window to the main office, so that way they can see, you know, the, the admin assistant can see who's there and then let people in. We have a separate entrance at Sheffield, but it doesn't have a window to the main office. It's just a separate entrance and they have to get buzzed in to get to the main office. So what we would do, and the pictures are down here. Try to move this. Oops. All right, so the current configuration is on the left. The main office is there and down below, I guess on, on the, try and figure out where I am. Okay, on the left is where the entryway is and you can see how there's a, a breeze, like a, an area there that they come into and they're glassed off, but they can't get to the main office until they're buzzed through. So what we would do is we would put a wall up where the current window is in the main office and that would become a conference room. And the main office where the admin assistant would sit would go to where the dean's office is. And then in the back of the main office is where the dean would be relocated to. So that would allow the window to be in, you know, on the main office where the admin assistant is to that already built um area with the glassed-in area is. So they walk into the first door and then they buzz in. They talk to the admin assistant before they're able to come into the building. So we believe that would be about twenty thousand dollars. Keith is working on estimates still and it would also allow for more conference space, conference room space in that main office. At Hillcrest, we're, we're always, we're running out of room in all of our buildings here, so we try to find areas that we could break up to make more breakout space for the students. So the cafeteria at Hillcrest has this corner stage in it. And so we're not sure if we would only do something with the corner stage or if we would do a whole wall and have a whole wall of additional breakout spaces. That might actually be cheaper. It might make, it might make the cafeteria too small, though, because what we don't have on that stage is any windows. So we would have to add the air like we did in the gym and you know, a lot of, a lot of moving parts to make that all work. So Heath is also working on estimates for this, but we think that would be about forty thousand dollars just because of the, the added cost of air, ventilation, heat, um, fire alarm, all of those things. For Gill, we're looking at a new head end for the intercom system. So we don't need a new intercom system, but we did just install intercoms at Hillcrest and Sheffield and we're able to op, access those remotely if we need to. And so if we put a new head end at the Gill School to just operate the intercom system, we'd be able to tie into that one as well. So we could put out a message to all of the schools at once. So if, you know, all of the schools would know, Hillcrest is going into a lockdown. So the other schools would also know. Or I'm not sure exactly what we would use it for, but um, Brian may have some ideas of when we would need to talk to all the schools at once in that way. And we would also tie the high school intercom system in, but that would be part of our regular budget. We wouldn't go to the towns for a five thousand dollar expense. All right, and then the biggest project would be the Hillcrest paving and sidewalk repairs. So we've talked about this for a few years now and we've done some small repairs, but I think we really need a major repair over there. So we have everything that's in red is what we would repair or replace. So in the back, at the top of this page, you can see where we have a dirt parking lot. And so that would be paved to allow for more parking. That area also floods and so we'd be able to repair that to stop the flooding. And then the sidewalk that goes around the front of the school, that whole area that goes around the front of the school and then around the um preschool kindergarten wing in the front where the students leave, all of that would be redone. The sidewalk that comes around the circle and out the exit is crumbling and so that's another area that needs to be repaired. And then at the very bottom, if I just scroll down a little bit more, you'll see this would be our new parent drop-off lot. So that would be expanded to make, to make more parking in that lot and then we would have the arrows show. So we'd have to add the driveway coming from the main driveway. Good drive around, and then come back out, and the parents that are parking and walking in, they would go through that other section. And then, we would eliminate the bottom driveway and only have the one coming off that road. So, Heath is working with the DPW on this one to get some estimates and see what we can do to repair it or to expand it and really upgrade it. We're also hoping that by December, we have an update on the MSBA submission that we made for the elementary school renovation replacement, because that would probably give us an idea of if we wanted to do a major upgrade with this driveway or more repairs. High school projects will be part of our operating budget, and so some of the items that we're thinking about are the electrical for the generator, and that would just be phase one of the project. So, when the generator is tested, it doesn't actually run the areas of the building that we would expect it to run to operate a shelter. So, we really need an electrician to come in and figure out how we need to get that hooked up, so that way we can, it's usable as a shelter. The music room could use AC in it, that is in the middle of the building, and it has the courtyards, but no operable windows. So, we'd have to have an AC up on the roof to be able to operate that. The stage curtains need to be repaired or replaced, it's the mechanics of it to meet the code restrictions on it. We've had some issues with those curtain controllers. And first floor, we would continue the first-floor hallway flooring replacement that we did in the middle of the building, but we didn't go all the way to the end, there was like no way to go all the way to the end, because people in the office wouldn't have had an exit. So, we'd go the rest of the way down the main hallways to both sides. Vape detection units for the restrooms, and then the new intercom head-end system repairs for the high school as well, to tie it into the other intercoms. So, it's fairly poor lighting here, huh?
Thank you, Joanne. Anyone have any questions or comments for Joanne? This is just an initial set of proposals, but at least it lets us all be aware of what's being looked at and what's being proposed for the next budget.
Yep, and I will be, I will have more updates on these projects and maybe some, some better estimates for them at the next meeting as well. There'll be more discussion about the budget at the next meeting as well.
Thank you, Joanne.
You're welcome.
The other item on our business agenda is just a reminder that the school committee meeting will take place with the students. If anyone is able to attend, there will be, a link will be sent out probably just before the meeting, Brian?
Actually, Tina sent it out to the school, to the entire school committee this evening, just before this meeting.
Okay, I didn't look-
Yeah, Beth Fortin had sent us the names of the students who will be participating tomorrow, and so, as Tina put the Google Meets link together, instead of just sending it to all of the kids, she sent a separate email to the school committee. So, if there are some folks who aren't able to attend tonight's meeting and they wanted to meet with students tomorrow, they could still do so by just jumping on that link.
Okay, and that, again, it will start at 9:10, and it will end at 9:38, because that's to make it fit within the gap section of the day. Okay, thank you. If anyone has a gender request, please get them to us. We generally meet the Tuesday before the next meeting, either Brian, Bill, or I would be happy to get those. Our next scheduled meetings are November 28th and December 12th. And I will need a motion and a second to vote to adjourn.
Also-
Okay, John, thank you, and Heather? Any other discussion on anything we neglected? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote. Bill?
Yes.
Heather? John?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
Cliff? And myself, yes. Thank you all. Good night.